Computer, I might be going in here. Not on my end.
Jeff, this is Peggy, are you there?
Yeah, mine's working now.
Jeff, this is Peggy.
Peggy, this is Jeff, were you asking for me?
Yeah, I was just, remind me, after the meeting, I just wanted to ask you something about the remodel. I stopped in and took some peeks the other day, and I just had a question, but since it's seven, I'll wait until after.
Okay, no problem.
Okay, at seven o'clock, I'm gonna call the Village Nuclearis Board Meeting to order. Lynn, would you do a little roll call, please?
Sure. Michael Bell?
President.
Mike Ganser?
Yes.
Peggy Cruz?
President.
Tammy Newberry?
Hello?
Tammy?
Yes.
Chuck Phillipson?
Here.
Roger Trutman?
Here.
Lori Wertz?
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, I look for an approval of the agenda.
So moved.
I would second, Ganser.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item three, public appearances and citizens' comments. No debate will occur with the board on items introduced by citizens. Items will not be added upon this meeting, but will be referred to the proper staff or committee if action is required. Is there anyone on that would like to speak? Okay, hearing none. I look for the approval of the consent agenda.
Ganser, Mike, I would move for approval of consent agenda.
Chuck, I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item five, Public Works, Public Safety. Item eight, consideration discussed with Village Nuclearis Claim Regarding Damage to Fire Hydrant and Water Main on April 8th of 2020. Drake?
On July 7th, 2020, the Village Board met to discuss the potential filing of a claim with the village's insurance company for damage sustained during an emergency response to a fire on May 8th, 2020. After discussion, the Village Board chose to file a claim. The village was reimbursed approximately $9,000 from its insurance company. The village's insurance, the village's insurance company subrogation process is currently ongoing. The Nuclearis Fire Department and Nuclearis Fire District, our present representatives are present to discuss that claim at the invitation of President Trutman. Tammy, did you want to add anything as the representative of the fire, the board liaison to the fire district?
Sure, so kinda what happened is, is that after we made the claim, our insurance company contacted Monticello Fire Departments and let them know that they were looking to be reimbursed due to possible error on the Monticello Fire Department's part. This kinda got the Monticello Fire Department to call the Nuclearis Fire Department and say, what's up, this was a mutual aid call. And Monticello Department, or then Nuclearis Fire Department, then I felt that maybe the village should have had better communication with them about our desire to seek some reimbursement for the, the broken main, I guess. And basically, they were just hoping that we would, in the future, if we had any kind of situations like that, that we would communicate with them better beforehand, I guess. And Brad, did you have anything to add to that?
Well, yes, I do. The fact is, is that I'm the ad hoc committee, committee for the district. I put in 41 years on the department, and a number of times, we've had this happen. And I, we've never gone through this particular procedure. I do feel bad that the village did not contact the district. And we, we have insurance, and I felt that it, you know, that should have been the number one thing, so now we just need kinda clear this up and find out where we're going. One of the thoughts is, is that, you know, there's liability insurance, and we have contacted our insurance carrier to make them aware that this did happen. I've heard nothing back from Ron Erickson on this, but I think we need to go. I, I'm trying to find, and I haven't been able to find information, that there was a mutual aid agreement between Rock, Green County and Dane County, but I haven't been able to find the copies of that. Plus, I think that they may have been superseded by the MABUS agreement. And so we need to, you know, take a look at those things. You know, this, this has happened before, and unfortunately, before the case was water mains that were subpar and no testing had taken place. But I can't say that, because I did not see it as far as the, the fire in, in May. So I think if we're gonna, gonna do anything, we should submit it to the district and go from there.
This is Peggy. I'm not sure, what is the misstep, then? You know, you have an issue, then you file, sure.
I'm sorry, Peg, I couldn't hear you on that.
I think Peg was asking what we did wrong by going to our insurance company, which will probably eventually get to your insurance company.
Yeah, I think, I think right away, we should have went right to the district. Because we cover, you know, everything, the, the building's covered, the liability's covered, the equipment's covered, and air and omissions are all covered. And I don't think that an outside department would stand to be liable, because it was our fire. I would, I'd like to find out, and I haven't been able to get a copy of their information in which they based the fact that Monticello was involved, and who all, and so forth. None of that's ever shown up, and I, I feel that that's the very bottom of the crux here, is who did the investigation, and what did they do?
So Brad, this is Chuck.
Yeah.
You're saying that, I think, what I'm getting is that you're saying the previous action was detrimental to the integrity of our mutual aid process. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think that's a pretty good summation, Chuck, I think you're right on target.
Okay, okay.
And the reason I say that is, is I think you're all aware that to maintain fire and EMS today, it takes a massive cooperation between all of your local partners. And, you know, we just have to, we have to go along, but I, I do think that you know, we just need to, to go after our insurance first, and, and if we can't do that, then we've gotta punt or do something different.
But, but but the, the, the crux of the matter is that we are potentially potentially, I don't know, not, not, not encouraging mutual aid if we, if we throw this on the shoulders of those people that respond and, and something bad happens, is, is that right?
Yeah, I agree with you 100%, Chuck, I really do.
Well, I'm, I'm asking you, is that, is that the situation?
Well, I, I think it just creates another problem that we are gonna have to overcome at some point. I don't know, is Josh on?
No, Josh said that he was comfortable with what he and I discussed.
Oh, okay.
So he actually did talk to Monticello Fire Chief last night, too, and they're over it. I mean, they're like, yeah, the insurance companies will do what insurance companies are gonna do. We can't really, we can't really fault that. And I also, Brad, just so you know, Drake, did, the insurance company isn't gonna release their investigation report to us. And we don't really get to dictate how, how insurance companies go about their thing. But I believe, Drake, from what I understand, is, is that you think our insurance company is working on its next step, which will likely be to contact the fire district's insurance. So basically, it'll end up going where, you know, we, we could have gone to begin with, is that kinda where I'm going to, Brad?
Correct, my understanding, after speaking with them, and I was not able to get ahold of them today to ask if we could receive a, a copy of their investigation, but the last I spoke to them was that the insurance company that represents the Monticello Fire Department had denied liability on behalf of themselves and their client. Now, they don't give a reason for that, but I'm, I'm assuming that, as has been stated before, that it's because it was a mutual aid call, that it wasn't their fire, so they are operating under the jurisdiction of the Nuclearis Fire District. So at this point, my understanding is, is that our insurance company, EMC, will be contacting the Nuclearis Fire District's insurance company as they proceed through their subrogation process.
Okay, that, that makes sense to me, Drake. You know, take it a step at a time. If we can find out, you know, what there is liability out there, and if it's covered, that's the way it is, and things are gonna happen, guys. Water mains are gonna leak. My question is, is what happens when a, when the water main leaks otherwise? We had a terrific leak not too long ago. And how long did it take to find it, and how much did it take to fix it? I, you know, God only knows, with everything that's going on in the ground today, you're lucky that something doesn't hit it, or go wrong, or something, so. But I think we're on the right track, if in fact, they're going back to the district and, and go, go out, use their particular liability.
So, I'm still confused, is this a matter of compensation, or is it a matter of relationships with other departments?
I think it's both, Chuck, to be honest with you. But I think the precedence here is the fact that the insurance company sent a bill to a mutual aid responding company, and I, I've never heard of that before. But again, a lot in life I haven't learned yet, I'm not old enough. But I, I think the real, real concern here is, number one, there was quite an expense to this. And, you know, who is responsible? Well, I think it ultimately rests back on the Nuclearis Fire District. That's, that's my feeling. Probably somebody else won't agree with me, but hey, it was our fire, and they were operating according to particular operational techniques, and, you know. But things do happen, unfortunately, so I, I think the best thing is go back to to the insurance, the way that they're doing, and if it doesn't, then we gotta sit down and have a meeting face to face, and see what we gotta work out.
So Drake, what, what are we actually looking for here?
At this point, I, I don't know if any action is, is required. That, before, what, when the, this item was originally placed, placed on the agenda, there were still some ongoing discussions between Tammy and other members of the district board. But I think that, as those discussions played out, and after speaking with the insurance company and realizing what their next steps were in their internal process, that it seems to be going in the direction that the Fire District would, would like it to. If I'm speaking wrongly, Brad or Tammy, let me know. And so at this point, now, there is not any, any action that's being requested of the, of the board. So it seems to be moving in the direction that they are, they are wanting it to. And that they had just wanted to have an opportunity to discuss the board's final decision to file the claim at, at a meeting.
So I agree that, I'm sorry, I agree that there, there is really not any action that we feel that that, that needs to be taken right now. We just wanted to make sure that we, that the Village Board and Fire District maybe have more communication if there is anything similar like this before anybody takes action, so that maybe both are then more aware of what's going on.
So it's more informative at this point. I'm sorry, I was just saying that, when I, when Tammy and I, I discussed this with Tammy earlier, I mentioned that in the future, if a claim like this came up, that I would make it part of my process, that as I was bringing it to the board, to ask if they would like to file the claim, that I would notify the Fire District Board of a potential claim, so that they may also be able to participate in any discussion that took place.
Good to me.
So Brad, are you comfortable now?
At this point, yeah, I, I think we gotta just let it play out and find out what's, what's relevant facts, and the one thing that I, I do wish we could do is get a copy of that investigation report by the insurance carrier. You know, I'd like to know, did he look at those pipes, did he look at the bolts on the hydrant, you know? There's a million questions I, I've got, but I, I guess I can't get it unless I get the information.
Ganser, Mike here. Drake, do we have any problem with forwarding a copy of that investigative report to Brad?
I don't, I don't have it in my possession, and I, I, when I, I called the insurance company today, and I had not heard back yet, so I, I don't think there is a problem providing it, but I, it has not been provided to me.
Okay, once we do that, or once you communicate further with the insurance company, can you ask them if it's a problem at all to forward that report onto Brad?
Yes, I can do so.
Yeah, please forward it right to the district. Cause that way, then, we're all aware of it, and we can go over it and possibly make some sense out of it.
Now, my next concern would be, Brad, you mentioned that there was the water main that, that broke, and then we also had this claim that we are talking about.
Right.
So we, we have two different scenarios where we've had these water systems, cut-off valves, and everything like that, that are malfunctioning on us. So what, what are we looking at for our current, all of our other current ones?
I, I wished I could answer that, Michael, but under, under statute, I believe, every one of those hydrants have to be tested on a yearly basis. And, but I'm not positive on this, it's only off the top of my head. And I do know that they have to take a flow, and a flow meter, and, and actually find out what they do flow. Few years back, we were testing hydrants for our ISO rating, and we ran across two hydrants that were shut off. They were never turned on. And that affected our ISO, well, then we corrected that, and it, it helped out and got us a better rating, so. But I know you, the water guys, you know, they check this stuff, but I, I, I can't answer specifically without that stuff in front of me.
Okay, is there a way that we can set this up in this, in a schedule, so that within the next year, we can get this report brought to the board? I just wanna make sure that this stuff is being done, I wanna know what the quality of our, our, our equipment is. Do we need to start looking into replacing these things? And then if so, we need to set up a schedule for when we're gonna replace it, based off of which one's worse, and try and get a plan in place, so that we don't have these types of problems in the future.
Right. As you know, when we, when you guys are the utility, replaced the Seventh Avenue water line and did the hydrants, those that they took out were the original hydrants that were put in in 1902. And they were both, they're all Correy hydrants. And I've got one of those, along with the testing procedure manuals and, and the check sheet, if you will, up at the museum. And we had that cleaned up and painted, and it's in there, so you know, that, that was a case where some, it was upgraded, and new hydrants put in. Now, I'm not sure how many more there are out there without going over and checking them, but yeah, they should be checked every year for flow, and to make sure that they're turned on.
Is that, is that a fire, fire department thing, or is that Public Works, Public Safety here?
Public, it's Public Works. And it, I believe there's a statute under what they have to do, but I, I can't say that right now, cause I, I
Right, you don't have that statute in front of you.
No, I don't have it in front of me.
This is Peggy. So basically, what we're looking for is, one, we wanna find out who is actually responsible for this water main. And two, what the report shows and the depth of damage, is that correct?
Well, I, I think that's the first thing we gotta find out. And, you know, and from there, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna be further information, I'm sure. But, you know, initially, you know, all of this, this needs to be brought together, and, and everybody scrutinize it and go over it.
Drake, do we, is this where we involve our attorneys to read over the verbiage, or do you feel comfortable doing that with our insurance policy, or the Fire District's insurance policy, or is the Fire District responsible for that?
Responsibility, after we file a claim, that's reimbursed by our insurance company, the insurance company then makes an assessment on its own, whether it's able to recoup its costs from any other responsible parties, so that's all part of their, you know, their internal workings. So no, I don't believe the, the village has to involve its, its attorney
Okay.
for a review of anything at, at this time.
So I, I have one more question. This main is working correctly at, at present, then, after its repair?
Yes, I, yes.
Okay, cause I wouldn't wanna sign off on anything, and then have something go awry, you know, in the spring, and then we've already signed off, and it was due to the damage. Okay, but if it's been working fine, then I guess it's been repaired, and there's no more, more interior damage.
Okay, if there's no more discussion, I guess we can move on. We don't need no motion or anything on this, things are going to be moving forward to contact the insurance company from the Fire District, so.
Mr. President, is there anything that you need further from me?
I don't think so, Brad.
Okay, well, let me know if there is, and you got my phone number.
Yes, I do.
Yeah, the only other thing that I was going to mention, and I think Tammy's got that information, is that our budget is the same as it's been the last three, four years. Total of 165,000 for operational budget, so I know that you're starting on budgets for next year, and I guess that was the only other information I had.
Okay, Brad.
Okay, and I'm gonna leave, thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
Bye now.
Bye.
Okay, item B, discussion consideration, Resolution 2017, Appointing Officer Nicholas Bart Tell, did I pronounce that right? Jeff, are you there?
Yes, you did.
Jeff or Bird?
Yes, you did.
So at this point, I'll, I'll turn it over to Jeff or Bird, if they wanna give a, a brief introduction of their recommended candidate. And then following that, an approval, they would be seeking an approval of the attached resolution 20-17 for official appointment to the position of officer.
Hey, no, I just, uh, wanted to introduce, he popped up on the screen for those of you who have, uh, I apologize, somebody's on the phone in my background, so I'll try to talk over it if I can, but uh, I just want to welcome Nicholas to, uh, the department. Um, we did a thorough background investigation on him. He did our, passed our citizen community interview, our panels, our professional panels and came out, uh, on top of it. So we're glad to have him on board and look forward to getting him on board and sworn in sometime tomorrow morning when he's down here in person with the village clerk. Anybody have any?
Yeah, we're here, we're here.
I just wanted to make sure I wasn't talking to myself and that thing was working. So, uh, that's it. Uh, would you see Nick? I'll let you, Nick can say hi to everybody. This is our village board. Normally we do this in person. Uh, and you take your oath and we hand you the badge, but unfortunately with the COVID, that's going to have to take place tomorrow, uh, morning, I believe at nine o'clock. I think Lieutenant Sturven's coordinated that with you and, uh, we'll take care of that first thing tomorrow morning.
Ganser, Mike here. Uh, so, uh, chief, uh, I'm taking that as a wholehearted, uh, recommendation?
That is a wholehearted recommendation, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Welcome from Tammy.
We need, we need a motion to pass the resolution.
Ganser, Mike here. I would, uh, move for the res- adoption of the resolution twenty dash seventeen.
Laurie, second.
Pick one.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Uh, any more discussion? Hearing in all the favors, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Item C, discussion consideration, special event permit application to the Nugler's Chamber for Kris Kendall Market, December eleventh through the thirteenth, twenty twenty.
Uh, the Chamber of Commerce has submit, submitted a special event permit application to hold a, uh, Kris Kendall Market, uh, from December eleventh through December thirteenth. If the event has not been held before, uh, the event would be open to the public and masks would be required. The event would encourage attendees to move in one direction to limit contact with other attendees. The, and, and the application anticipates up to, uh, five hundred attendees. Uh, the Green County Health Department considers this event high risk and recommends against proceeding with the event. Uh, the Public Works and Public Safety Committee chose not to issue a recommendation. Uh, and Becca with the chamber is present, uh, to answer any questions you may have, uh, regarding the event.
We, we did not recommend it, but we did not, not recommend it, Drake.
Correct. Told not to issue any recommendation.
This is, uh, Peggy and at our subcommittee meeting, we decided that we would bring it to the entire village board so we could have a, um, a more discussion on it. Um, the three of us, a couple on the fence and, uh, we just didn't know where to move. Um, I have thought about it a little bit more and I do have a couple of questions for, um, who is being represented tonight from the, who is here tonight representing the?
Becca Stafford.
So, okay, Becca, I do have a couple of questions for you. This is Peggy. Um, is my understanding that the businesses are to be opened while the Kindle March is, uh, going on?
Yes.
Okay. So the businesses will be open as well. Then my other question was, is the kiosks, where are those coming from?
Uh, the kiosks are being provided by a local business. They are, uh, wooden chalet style kiosks, uh, maybe ten by ten feet or so.
And so those will be, those would be, um, uh, not the, they would not cost the, the businesses anything? Is that correct?
So the way we have the, the vision we have for it at the moment is that for a person, for a vendor, for a business, whatever, to use one of the chalets, um, it would cost a hundred dollars, fifty dollars of that would be, um, a security deposit. If they left it in good shape, they'd get that money back and then the other fifty dollars would go towards the electricity and other costs that, that are involved in putting this on. Um, we would be opening it up to local businesses, um, chamber members, uh, first. And after that, it would be opened up to local artisans, crafters, that, that sort of thing.
And have we surveyed the businesses to see the favorability they have for this?
The businesses that are represented by the chamber board are very excited about it. They feel that it would bring people to town. It would be a, a boost, um, to the coffers. Um, beyond that, we haven't surveyed the wider business community since we didn't, it's such a delicate time anyways. We didn't want to have it too widespread.
Yeah. Um, the stores would then be open, so it really wouldn't be any different from uh, someone patronizing, uh, a facility in the winter inside. They would also have that opportunity to, to, uh, patronize the community outside as well. So we really would have the businesses opened, correct?
The businesses would all be open. Yep.
I don't feel like we could limit individual businesses. We can't come in and as a government agency saying you have to be closed. That's, that's just wrong.
Right. Well, the, you know, the discussion we had, Mike, about the, at the last meeting, I, as I thought about it, I thought in some ways, what difference is it to have someone patronize the inside of a facility as opposed to patronizing the outside of a facility or the outside? They're going to be here anyway, is, is my thought as I, as I went through this, uh, from our last meeting, trying to make a decision about how I truly felt about it. So, um, the businesses are going to be open. Um, I know it's not, uh, Green County's, uh, you know, in, in our best interest, according to Green County. So I'll, I'll open it up for discussion, but I just wanted to get mine answered to help the other members make some, makes their decisions. I'm done.
Ganser, Mike here. Uh, Becca, is there going to be a spacing, uh, between these, uh, these, uh, booths?
There will be. They won't be, they won't, they won't be elbow to elbow. Um, in, in the way that they might've been in a normal year. We will have them spaced out. I can't tell you exactly how spaced out. It's going to depend on our electrical capabilities and how many chalets we ultimately end up using. Right now we're looking at, at about twelve that would be spaced out over on both sides of, uh, First Street and then down Fifth Avenue a bit.
Could, could you possibly give us an idea of minimum space between the two?
Uh, we don't have anything specific out. Um, I mean, I, I would think at least fifteen feet between each, each chalet. I mean, you'd want some space anyways, no matter what. So people didn't get to shoulder to shoulder, but, um, we don't have a specific number. No.
But offhand, you're thinking fifteen feet?
At, at a minimum, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Becca, this is Bert from the Police Department. I have a quick question. You are currently going to utilize Fifth Avenue between Railroad and Second and then First Street up till Sixth Avenue, correct?
That is what we requested to be closed. Yes. Um, how much of it we actually utilize will depend on how many vendors we have interested and again, what our electric capabilities are.
So was there, other than the huts, was there going to be anything else? There's not going to be any food carts or trailers or beer trailers or anything like that, was there?
Um, definitely no beer trailers, no, uh, food carts. If there are local business people who have food carts, like if the Nugler's Hotel Restaurant was interested in using their food cart, um, we would allow that, but, um, it's not, it's not really meant to be a super heavy on the food kind of thing. We don't want people cooking in the chalets. We, that's just a fire risk.
Right. And, and I understood that when we looked at the permit. So I guess the bottom line is you have two full blocks to spread out. Fifteen, approximately fifteen of those, uh, little huts. So, I mean, I think you could easily get your distance and, you know, CDC separations for everybody within those blocks, wouldn't you?
I think we could spread out a great deal over that amount of space. It's again, it's the, how, how the electricity plays out. There is really only one area in that downtown space that, that we have good, solid electrical access. It's at the corner by Bank of Nugler's. And so it just depends, um, I mean, we could do generators or something like that, but that kind of detracts from the quaint Christmas market feel of it. Um, so yeah, it's, it's going to come down to electricity, but we have the space.
Okay. And that's all, that was my only concern, that you had the space to do it. Uh, because I thought initially we had talked maybe possibly more than just twelve or fifteen huts or whatever. So, no, that's fine. Uh, the PD's good with it if that's whatever the board decides.
Becca, when, how long will these huts be up? I was confused by that.
So we're expecting it to be a bit of an ordeal to get them up and situated. They're big and heavy. Um, so we would be shutting down the streets, uh, Thursday morning through Monday afternoon. While the event itself would be Friday, Saturday and Sunday.
Or a hand sanitizer. And then the other question or the other comment I had, I noticed in the notes, it said that you would have volunteers as, um, in addition, um, to, you know, some of the people that are involved in the businesses or whatever. And perhaps those volunteers could, uh, look at, uh, social distancing and spacing as people, uh, migrate and, uh, purchase items and not cluster in crowds as they do at some of the stores that people are now attending?
We will have signage, um, suggesting that people social distance, um, we'll have chamber staff there. I, while we, we will have some volunteer requirements, this isn't going to be heavy on the volunteers and honestly, I don't feel good about asking volunteers to police people's distancing. We've already seen downtown that some people get pretty gritty about being told what to do. So, um, that's something that would largely fall on chamber staff if,
Okay.
if it's needed.
Ganser, Mike here. I have a question. Becca, uh, I see here there's made mention of, uh, bans out and backstage area. Uh, is that implying that there will be a stage area with, uh, a band or more?
Um, let me see. No, nope. The stage area, I think that got left in by mistake from another, another permit. Uh, we do not plan to have any stage area. We would have, um, hopefully again, based on electrical, but we would have music. We would have, uh, temporary speakers put up, um, on a couple of the light poles and with Christmas music piped in. But no, no bands, no stage.
Okay. Thank you. Ganser, Mike here again. Um, I, I was at first hesitant about this, but right now I am going to make, after looking at everything and certainly there are much worse conditions out there, um, for the spread of COVID nineteen. And I see this as a, um, particularly good move in the right direction. And so I'm going to make a motion to approve the special, uh, events permit.
Laurie, where's, I'll second that.
Okay, we have motion, a second. Lynn, I'd like a roll call vote on this, please.
Okay. Are we ready?
Yes.
Yep.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Mike Ganser?
Yes.
Peggy Cruz?
Point of order, point of order, point of order. Uh, you do not, uh, call the roll for a vote without discussion on the motion.
I forget to say that. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry Chuck. I forgot to, I thought the discussion was all done. I'm sorry. Uh, what do we do now?
If everyone agrees, you can return to discussion.
Okay. Does everybody agree to return to discussion?
Yes.
Sure.
Okay.
Yes. That's a.
Okay. Discussion is open.
Hey, this is Chuck. I, I might as well make it clear from the start. I'm not, I'm not in favor of this. I'm not in favor of overriding any public health officials, uh, uh, statements or desires or proclamations. Um, but one thing that bothers me more than any is the open intoxicants uh, thing. Um, it states here that open intoxicants will be allowed. I don't think there's any question that intoxicants and good sense don't mix. So right off the bat, we are just saying, let's have a party. We're saying, let's have a party at a time when we are at the highest COVID that we've had in this state and in this area since this whole thing began. And as much as I feel for the businesses, as much as I feel for, for the, the, the people that are affected by this, we need, it's, it, we need to get together and say, no, we're gonna, we're gonna fight this thing and we're gonna suffer. And we're going to do everything we can to stop the spread. And this, there's no way that this is doing anything to stop the spread. I don't see any, any, any policing of the situation. I don't see anything that says this is anything other than a, a party. I, I, uh, correct me if I'm wrong. People are going to be gathering together. People are going to be drinking on the streets because obviously it's a party. What? You think that this isn't going to further the spread of COVID? I, I, I don't get it. Um, that's a rhetorical question, by the way. I'm just stating these things so that you know why I'm not voting in favor of it.
I guess I would like to know, is it possible? I mean, I guess I, I wasn't really thinking through the open intoxicants either. What is the point in that when the, uh, when the, when the idea of the, the shopping outside, why are we allowing the open intoxicants? And is that something that we don't have to have?
I think traditionally, most of the, uh, outdoor Christmas markets do have open intox, um, selling like mulled wine or hard cider or something like that is
I guess.
the norm for these as well. Um, it's, it's seen as a, a way to boost the local bars too, who aren't seeing as much business as, as they need lately.
Well, how do you balance safe protocol with open intoxicants? I mean, it's no different than saying, let's, let's go to the bar. Let's go to the bar, take our masks off, drink.
Chuck, I, I don't feel like you're out of line at all for this. Um, I feel like this Kris Kendall Mart is a stepping stone into something bigger. And I am personally not opposed to lim- removing that, that parameter of open intoxicants out in the street. You know, that i- it's going to be an idea of trying to get people into town, uh, to do a little bit more shopping with our businesses before we are completely hit with this cold winter that nobody is going to come out for. You know, this is, winter is always horrible for Nuglers. It's always horrible. And we, we work our butts off all summer long so that we can put our acorns away for winter so that we can survive and do another year. We could not do that this year. And a lot of businesses are suffering the worst kind of suffering. There are several businesses that will not continue on, uh, if we shut down again. I've heard this from many people. I've had people bursting out into tears because it is their entire livelihood. This is their life. And it is, and all we need to do is just keep trying to give some sort of situation, some sort of ability for these people to survive and, and keep on going. And I, I don't, I don't care how safe we need to make it. If people need to be in hazmat suits to walk through our town, fine. But give our businesses a chance. So yeah, let's, let's just remove this open intoxicant. Um, cause yeah, we, we don't need a party. We don't need to have things spike up and. Um, cause yeah, we, we don't need a party, we don't need to have things spike up in the middle of winter. No, that's, that's fine, we, we don't need people drinking in the middle of the street.
Uh, so, um, there is a motion and a second, so if you, if someone, if we did want to remove the open intoxicant, uh, I would suggest, uh, someone make a motion to amend. Um, and, uh, move to remove the open intoxicant provision, uh, from the permit.
Ganserit Mike here, and I, I made the original motion, and I feel that there is no need to correct that motion. And as a side, as a side mention to this, I, I feel that we did much worse, the, the, the conditions under spreading COVID-19, now it's my opinion it, is that we did much worse by opening the basketball courts, the, um, baseball program and whatever other program that we opened up. Um, there, there, there was no, I did not see any policing done at any one of those events.
Uh, just, uh, I mean, uh, just to clarify, a motion to amend does take, um, precedence over the original motion, so if a motion to amend did pass, then it would become the main motion.
This is Tammy Newberry, I'll make a motion to amend the, uh, permit without the alcohol, open intoxicants.
Okay, we'll need a second on that motion.
Lori Wertz, I'll second that.
Okay, what? Is there any more discussion on motion to amend? Okay, hearing none? We need a roll call vote, thanks Drake, I'm happy. Can you do the roll call, please Lynn?
Just a second, Ganserit Mike here. So, the motion is to pass the, uh, permit excluding the alcohol, is that correct?
Correct, so the, the main mo- the original motion was to approve the special event permit, and the new motion that's on the floor is a motion to amend, uh, that motion to approve it with the exclusion of the open, allowing of open intoxicants.
Okay, thank you Drake.
Okay, ready for the roll call?
Yes.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Mike Ganser.
Yes.
Peggy Cruz.
Yes.
Tammy Newberry.
Yes.
Chuck Phillipson.
No.
Roger Trupman.
No.
Lori Wertz.
Yes.
Okay, um, so just proceduralize, uh, so Lynn, could, could you read the results of that, please?
I have, um, it voted to carry five to two.
Okay, so that means that the amendment to the motion passed, so now the motion on the floor is approval of the special event permit without the allowance of an open intoxicant, so then, uh, we're back to discussion on the, the new motion, which has been amended. Um, and if discussion, then after that discussion, then another roll call vote to approve the permit with the exclusion of open intoxicants.
Oh, wait a minute, I got confused then. I wanted to vote, I, I thought we were voting with the amendment, which would be to exclude open intoxicants, I'm confused.
So you, the, the motion, you were voting on the motion to amend the original motion, which was to insert the exclusion of the open intoxicant into the original motion, so by, by that motion passing, that amendment was inserted into the original motion. And so now the original motion has been amended to read approval of the special event permit with, with the removal of the provision to allow open intoxicants. So if this motion passes, the special event permit will be approved, but open intoxicants would not be permitted.
Thank you.
Are we ready for a roll call? Now we're voting on the amendment, correct, or, uh, we are voting now on the, uh, resolution to allow.
You're voting on the amended, the original amended motion, so it's, um, the motion on the floor is, um, approval of the special event permit with, without the allowance of open intoxicants, so open intoxicants will not be allowed if the current motion on the floor carries.
Is, can I ask a question here? Um, can we have a discussion at this point, or are we done with that?
Hmm, we are in discussion on the, on the amended motion.
We can't, we are, we are, we can do that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, uh, you know, I, I remember our subcommittee meeting and, and we went around and round with this because we also could not, uh, you know, we wanted to make a responsible decision, and that's why we brought it up to the, to the full board. Um, you know, I do believe we have a responsibility to the citizens as well as the businesses. So I was trying to weigh these options, but perhaps these kiosks would keep people from entering the stores, because during the Christmas season, they're gonna come in anyway. They're gonna come in and shop anyway, so it, it might be a healthier situation. Um, it, and also provide some, um, healthy business for, uh, the businesses as well. So, I've seen it firsthand, um, in the store that I work in, that people are really, uh, people who frequent that particular business are really conscientious about distancing, et cetera, and wearing masks, now I'm not saying that that's everywhere, but, um, we do get a lot of visitors from other places, and maybe we would be keeping them outside, and that might be, uh, a healthier healthier thing than, than inside, or keeping them dispersed more in any sense, in any case, so, my two cents.
I, I would like to say that I agree too, I was not comfortable with the open intoxicants, cause I could see that that would encourage people to stand around and have beverages, and this really, to me, the idea for this is an opportunity to shop, get Christmas gifts and not linger. Um, and so I feel much more, I feel much more comfortable with this without, it doesn't mean they can't purchase alcohol, because they can purchase alcohol, they just can't drink it out, out here, they can just purchase it and take it to their home. So I think, I just feel much more comfortable with the idea that people should be coming with the idea of going to their kiosk, purchasing and, and getting back in their car and going. So I feel much more comfortable that way than giving them a reason to linger.
And it might attract, you know, uh, more, I'm sure it will attract children as well, and it might be more kid-friendly without the intoxicants.
Okay, is there any more discussion on the amended motion? So now we're voting on the permit application without the, um, alcohol in the village.
Correct, so a vote, a yes vote is to approve the permit, uh, which now does not include open, open intoxicants, or in a no vote is to deny the permit.
So is everybody ready to vote, we'll have a roll call vote, is the discussion all done? Okay, Lynn, go ahead, please.
Okay, Mike Bell.
Yes.
Mike Ganser.
Yes.
Peggy Cruz.
Yes.
Tammy Newberry.
Yes.
Chuck Phillipson.
No.
Roger Trupman.
Nope.
Lori Wertz.
Yes.
Carries five to two.
Thanks Lynn. Okay, moving on, consideration discussion, authorization to begin pilot testing of filtration system at the wastewater treatment plant.
At a previous meeting, the board authorized strand engineering to move forward with pilot testing for a new filtration system at the plant. Uh, the village has since received cost estimates from the manufacturers for the pilot testing of their systems. Uh, the utility would pilot test filtration systems from two manufacturers, AquaAerobic and Kruger. This is a necessary step in the process leading up to the eventual plant upgrade to meet state phosphorus requirements. The total cost is approximately twenty-six thousand dollars, and the Public Works and Public Safety Committee recommends approval.
Ganserit Mike here, I would, uh, authorize to begin, uh, pilot testing.
I'm Michael Bell, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and second, uh, any discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item six, old business, aid discussion consideration twenty-twenty-one preliminary budget.
Um, so since we last, uh, spoke at our last meeting, the village, uh, did receive approximately sixty-three hundred dollars in, uh, new highway aid. Uh, the additional funds are, uh, recommended to be allocated as follows. Um, increase, increase the employee payout fund to twelve hundred do- by twelve hundred dollars, this brings the total funding to seven thousand dollars, which is more in line with years past. Uh, social media archiving, twenty-five hundred dollars, social media posts and communications are public record in the state of Wisconsin. Uh, the village does not have an archiving system for social media. The funding would be used to implement an archiver so that those records are kept, um, similar to how email communication, uh, is kept uh, in an archive. Um, for po- possible, um, records requests. Um, New Glarus Squad Car Sinking Fund, fourteen hundred dollars, uh, this paired with the general fund surplus transfer, uh, would have a eleven thousand four hundred dollar contribution to the Police Department, uh, Squad Car Sinking Fund. And then twelve hundred dollars, uh, for the Hoesley Park Portable Restroom. Uh, the village would add one additional restroom to its current contract, uh, for placement at Hoesley Park. Um, so those are the only, uh, changes, um, since our last meeting, uh, since we received our, um, notification of highway, highway aid from, uh, the state. Um, so, the, uh, the public hearing is, is currently scheduled for November seventeenth. Um, Lynn, can you please remind me, um, what type of action, uh, we are looking for?
I would say if they just approve these changes and moving forward with that public hearing, I will go ahead then and publish the, um, budget information for the public hearing with the numbers that we've talked about at the last meeting, and then these updated numbers. And that will be published at the end of October in order to meet the, um, fifteen day requirement before the public hearing on the seventeenth.
So Lynn, do you need the first motion to be that we accept the changes that Drake has proposed here?
That would be great.
Uh, this is Tammy, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we accept the, uh, changes, uh, in the preliminary budget as Drake has proposed.
This is Chuck, I'll second.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
Yes, Ganserit Mike here, so I see that, um, the sinking squad car fund has changed from ten thousand to eleven thousand, is that correct?
Uh, eleven, around eleven thousand four hundred, right now there's, in the recommended budget, there's a scheduled transfer from general fund surplus of ten thousand dollars. And then we, uh, the recommendation is to utilize, uh, fourteen hundred dollars of the, um, state highway funding, sixty-three hundred dollars we received, um, to bring that total in the, uh, twenty-twenty-one budget to around, uh, eleven thousand, um, four hundred dollars.
Okay, I, I have another question with regards to the same, uh, sinking fund. Um, there's a category here for PD tech sinking fund, and I see that there's nothing in there. But there seems to be an indication that in the past, we have had money there. And I'm wondering if I'm reading that incorrectly, or if it was just changed to nothing.
Uh, there, there is a balance, uh, Lynn, can you remind me what the, do you have what the balance of it is currently? I believe what you're seeing is that no additional funds are being allocated in there in twenty-twenty-one, but there is a balance currently.
Um, it's on the last page of the packet. The current balance is sixty-two hundred, so almost sixty-three hundred. And the current balance in the squad is thirty-two thousand eight. So I think they, uh, uh, can occasionally use those interchangeably if necessary. You know, depending on what purchase needs to be made. And I, I believe, well, the radios are, are separate from this, aren't they?
Correct.
Yep.
I have a further question if I may, from, to the, uh, Bert, are you there?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Um, and are you okay with this, with these changes here?
Well, historically, we've always had the sixteen hundred put into it every year, and we just don't know from, you're the, you know, how much more of the car, cause we get a, we, our cars are on a six-year rotation. And with, every six years, we get rid of the oldest and bring in a new one, so I don't know for sure what the prices for the twenty-twenty-ones are gonna be at when they come out. And, um, you know, I, it's always been sixteen before, and now we dropped down. So I just hope there's enough in there, because we were due to replace one of our computers also, which I guess could come out of the, the technology fund. Um, but I don't know, again, the, the exact cost on that at this point in time.
Okay, but what the, uh, technology sinking fund, you're okay with that?
I'm sorry, Mikey, cut out, I lost you there, I'm sorry.
Uh, but with the sinking fund for the technology fund, that's okay with you there, the balance as is? Without any to it?
I mean, like anything, our, our department is extremely dependent on technology, and its technology only has a certain life expectancy to it. Um, whether it's computers, printers, uh, technology like the tasers that we carry or whatever. Um, I mean, I guess it is what it is, obviously we'd like more, but we'll just have to, I guess, wait and see what we can come up with. Uh, the initial thing is, that squad car sinking fund is, we normally get like grants, you know, uh, state highway traffic safety grants, and that sinking fund has allowed us a cushion, if you would, to kinda move some money around to buy different things, uh, but usually when we get a traffic safety grant, we have to designate that towards traffic safety equipment for like the squad cars, light bars or whatever. But with the sinking fund, when we get those grants, we're able to put money in there and then take some of the other money out. I know we did that one other time when we replaced all our tasers, um, our less lethal, uh, control devices, which is referred to as a taser, so, you know, like any department, we'd like more money in there, but we gotta do what we gotta do, I guess.
Yeah, and, and I guess that we, at this point with this COVID going on and, and money the way it is, we, we all have to kinda tighten our belts.
Yeah, I agree, I mean, I, I mean, I don't think we're gonna have to walk around the village to patrol, but I mean, uh, again, we'll, we'll have to see what we can do and make do with what we have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Lynn, is there a, was there a second to, to Tammy's motion?
Yes, by Chuck.
Okay.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. So Lynn, you can do the budget and be ready for the public hearing on the seventeenth.
I'm on it.
Okay, I'm sure you are. Item seven, consideration discussion, cancellation on November fourth, twenty-twenty Village Board Meeting.
Um, if, if you aren't aware, there's an election on November third, um, which which pushes the meeting back to November 4th. We are, we don't have any pressing items for that meeting and we do expect it to be a potentially a long night for accounting for the village clerks and our election staff and whoever may be assisting in that. So without any pressing items, we are seeking, we are asking the village board to cancel the November 4th meeting. Obviously, if anything pressing came up, I would work with Roger to call a board meeting, but we don't anticipate that. And so our next board meeting would be November 17th.
Ganserit Mike here. With that in mind, I think there's no reason, as you say, it is going to be a tough evening on November 3rd. I would make a motion to cancel the November 4th village board meeting.
Chuck, I'll second.
Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, committee reports, parks and rec. Chuck?
Okay, as long as I have the floor, I will, I'm going to start off by just asking that we move committee reports higher up on the agenda for the simple reason that even things we discussed tonight could have been, could have been further illuminated through committee reports, i.e. budget considerations, public works, items that pertain to the the motion that was made tonight. I'm not asking for any action on this. I just think it's something that should be considered and I think it's probably more typical of of many organizational meetings. So anyway, parks and recreation, we met last Wednesday and I guess the main item of discussion was the Garner Park Improvement Project. We decided to pare down the, the, some of the items in the bid, bidding process for Garner Park Improvement, which we're still, I believe, Drake, if, correct me if I'm wrong, waiting for further information from engineering on what specifically we would do with this and how the bidding would proceed. But at any rate, we're working on it. And hopefully we could, by paring this down, we could come in with a more reasonable amount of money. The budget development, nothing earth shaking there. As I said before, there was an item for Porta John's at Hoesley Park under the, under the new funding that we discussed prior to this agenda item. And I guess, I guess we've approved that for the budget. So that's, that's what I have. I don't know, Roger or Lori, do you have anything to add to that?
I have nothing, Chuck.
Okay.
I don't either.
Okay, that's my report.
Okay, thank you, Chuck. Item B, Public Works, Public Safety, Peggy.
We met a week ago, Monday at 2:00 in the afternoon. And much of what we discussed has already been acted upon at this meeting. We had a longer conversation about the Kris Kendall market and made a decision to take that to the full board. And some of the discussion that you had tonight was similar to what we had. Then we had two other items, the spring cleanup, we had a discussion on that, the 2021, how we can look for perhaps some cost-saving measures and we explored that. No action was taken, it was just a discussion. And then, of course, we passed the WWTP pilot test. I mean, we are in the process, we can't stop in our tracks. So that went very smoothly. Utility financials didn't really have any burps. It looked good and we adjourned.
If I may interject, most of that points to my request for a further future consideration of moving the committee reports farther up on the agenda so that we don't get into these redundancies. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Peggy. Library Board, Tammy?
Sure, we actually meet again tomorrow night, so we haven't met for a couple of weeks now. Basically, our considerations are things that we're concerned about primarily is trying to keep the library running during this timeframe. We've pretty much chosen to continue to use the outdoor window and that we are getting an upgrade to that window, which should help us with more inclement weather coming. There's also, you know, of course, further discussion as to the building project, which I think we're going to talk about more tomorrow too. So at this time, I don't really have any updates on that. And that's pretty much what's going on with the library.
Okay, Tammy, thank you. New Glares Fire District, Tammy, please.
Sure, as Brad pointed out, we discussed that we kept the budget pretty much right in line with where it's been. And there was a discussion in regards to the hydrant as we talked about earlier. And that was pretty much what we discussed at that meeting, so. Nothing further on that.
Okay, Tammy, thank you. And there's no president's report, but before we adjourn, I want to apologize again to you, Chuck, for moving forward on that motion and that vote because I spaced it out there, we didn't have any discussion on it. So again, I apologize to you for that, so, and the rest of the board.
No problem.
So is there any further business? Hearing none, we are adjourned.